Got to figure out a way to make this cheaper. Can we split it? What, what are we going to be able to do to bring the cost down? And so your engineers did some looking and we kind of put together a presentation for you this evening just to kind of go through those numbers and what those impacts are going to be. So the next slide basically just gives you where you are today. This is based on all your updated rates in terms of the increase that you did January 1. I think the, the, the number to kind of keep your eye on is what the, it's the kind of the blue box on the right. The average residential user is paying somewhere around $54 a month based upon the new rates. And that's based upon the average usage of 3,795 gallons a month. You did bring your volumetric rates along with an increase. You brought the, the pressure zone that is outside of the community. You brought those rates up rather significantly because the, the old volumetric rates had not been changed for some time. And so you brought them in line with what your, I believe your ordinance says, which is that they pay 200% of the, the base fee plus whatever volumetric charge is being charged for the various usage tiers. You don't have any surcharges out there whatsoever. Some communities use them, but right now you don't have any surcharges. So then you go to the next slide. Sometime we'll go to the next slide. There's a magic person out there that's doing this. It's not me. So we looked at what would happen if you did nothing? How would we, you know, what's, what's the impact of that going to be? There's a development impact. You know, you've got some existing taps that you're committed to provide. And basically we kind of approached it going, okay, the utility has been operating pretty much shoestring and actually been running deficits. So what would it take to bring the utility to a financially stable place? That's what we looked at for the status quo. Then based upon the information that Dewberry provided, we have a reduced project that would include installation of the pre-treatment facility, which is, I think imperative due to the water quality coming out of the Colorado River. And then add some additional treatment. But then you're looking at having to add the second train of the treatment in a timeframe. And the guess is somewhere in three to five years. It could be one year, it could be five years. No one knows when that would fail, or the existing treatment would fail, or you'd have to replace some of the components of the existing treatment. And then we've got the third, which is the full project. You guys have all seen the full project. We don't necessarily have to spend a lot of time dwelling on that. So if we go to the next slide, I'm trying to boil this down to keep the discussion at a relatively high level. So if you were to just stay status quo, your existing plant is probably rated for about a half a million gallons a day. There wouldn't be any plant improvements. You would trust, we would adjust the water rates to get you to a financially stable place that would also fund annual main replacement, which is something that really is, you need to look at. The issue is similar with the reduced project, you've got probably three to five years of life left in the existing equipment. It could be less. Our guess is three to five years when that's going to fail. And you have to have a solution to be able to provide potable water for the community. If you were to not do any plant improvements or any upgrades, you probably should be looking at limiting any future growth of the community because you're already taxing the plant as it stands in your peak days. To bring everything up to a financially stable position and, you know, if you guys offline want me to provide some of the spreadsheets behind this, I'm happy to. But spreadsheets don't really work well on a PowerPoint screen. But the average user cost would jump to about $89.80. That's what the average user would need to be looking at, which is about a $35 increase. So, you know, just as a reminder, we've been looking at for the whole project roughly about a hundred dollar increase from where you were originally, which was the 2022 rates. Part of that was the plant components, but also part of it was just this in terms of bringing the utility into a financial stable position. So that would be about another 65% increase in terms of what your rates are right now. So that's just, that's basically, all right, we're just going to kick this can down the road a little bit further and hopefully a much larger pot of money will come down the pike to help us pay for this plant. So that's, that's kind of that first slide. The next slide gets into a reduced project. And this is where Pat Radaba and Dewberry did some work and basically came up with that to do a reduced project, the components that you would need to install is the pre-treatment facility. You would have to put in one, one MGD train, which is the treatment. It's their language, not mine, which would cost about 18.2 million dollars. We're assuming that you're going to still be able to get some principal forgiveness based upon the infrastructure bill. Our guess is that it's going to be about 25%. We don't know until we actually apply what they would provide. The full project, if you recall, we kind of maxed what we're eligible to get out of the SRF, which is about $5 million. We're guessing it might be a little bit less than that. So that's phase one of the project. Then phase two of the project comes in somewhere in that three to five year range. We pegged it at three. A little nervous about going much further out in terms of planning for that. But you would have that second train for treatment that would need to be installed that would replace the existing equipment that you have. We've assumed that that chunk of money in today's prices would go up about 8% annually. Construction costs have gone up much more significantly over the last couple of years. We've tempered that a little bit on the assumption that things are going to regulate a little bit. We can't continue, or I shouldn't say we can't, but the, we're trying very hard to get inflation down and those pressures down so that we're not experiencing 10%, 15% year over year cost increases for some of these things. This would bring, so originally if you just do the phase one, it's a, the guess is that you'll get to about a .6 MGD plant because you'll improve the, the efficiency of the existing equipment. But you're not going to get to a million gallons a day. You're going to get to about .6. So it's an improvement. It wouldn't be until you do the second phase of the project before you'd get to a one MGD plant. And, you know, just in talking with the engineers, basically your plant is going to be rated for whatever the smallest piece of equipment can produce in terms of potable water. And in this case, that's the, the, the existing plant is going to be the limiting factor in terms of what you can say. Because you have to be able to take your, you know, your largest piece of equipment out of service and still produce water. And so that's why you would be rated at the lower MGD versus a higher MGD. Now, you know, I'm just a, I'm just a finance guy, but you're going to build a new plant. You would certainly hope that in the first five years, you don't have a failure. But crazier things happen. And I, you know, and I think, I think Pat's on the phone or on the, on the call. He might be able to opine about the, you know, the longevity of plants and how often you might have to take it out of service. That's not something I know. So the impacts of a reduced project, again, you're in that three to five year timeframe where you're going to do the initial project. And then in three to five years, you're going to have to do the second piece. And one thing I'll point out is that it's going to take roughly two years to build this first part, phase one. So you're basically in a situation where you need to start planning for and getting ready to build phase two immediately. Because if it's, you know, the, the, the existing equipment fails in two years, it's a two-year timeframe to build out that second train. If it's three years, you're still kind of in the same boat. If you're lucky and it's five years down the future, maybe you have some, a little time. But the bottom line is you really need to be in a position where you're ready to go forward with that next phase of the plant. Because if the existing equipment fails, goes down, you don't have a secondary water source or a way to treat water. And that creates a problem and you're going to be likely under orders to do it anyway. So this reduced project, phase one, would bring the user cost up to about $122 a month, which is an additional $68 over what the 2023 rates are going to charge the average residential customer, which is about 125% increase. Once you get to the point where you have to do phase two, then you're going to jump up to about $157, almost $158, which is an additional $35 and a half dollar increase. So that's the reduced project. I'll bring this all back into a circle at the end, but let's go to the next slide. You've all seen this next slide, which is the full project as it, as, as it's currently been designed by Dewberry, that you would get a, it's, I shouldn't say 2 million, two MGD plant, it's a one MG plant. That's an error on my part. You're looking at a $28 million cost for the plant. You've got the $5 million of principal forgiveness. We assume about just shy of a $22 million borrowing amortizing it over 20, 20 years. Your plant is rated for one MGD so that you can take one of those trains out and do maintenance on it while the other one provides more than enough water for the community as it stands right now and all the growth that's out there. So you're going to meet, you know, from an impact perspective, you're going to meet any requirements that you currently have and additional growth that you're also looking at. If you recall, in the Water Master Plan, there was actually some significant growth that's going to happen over the next 20 years to the tune of 60 to 70 new residential equivalent units on an annual basis, which is rather significant. This full project, again, brings you to about $147.33 a month, which is about a $93 increase. It's actually less than if you split the projects apart because you're building it in one shot and you're not subject to anything that's going to happen in the future. Plus the way the debt's going to work with the, with a split project, you're going to get some doubling up of debt payments in there, which is going to be a little harder to manage. So if you go to the next slide, I've tried to kind of boil this down and this is why spreadsheets don't do very well on PowerPoints. You know, it's a good thing I had LASIK because I can still read all those numbers. But I think the key, if you go across the bottom of the page, the, the yellow stripe, currently the average customer is paying $54.42. If you do no plant, our recommendation is that you need to get to about $89 or $90 a month so that the utility is operating in a financially sound manner. If you did the partial project, in the first phase, you're going to be at about $122 a month. By the time you do the second phase, then you're going to jump up to almost $158. If you do the full project, it's $147. So it's about a $10 a month difference by spreading it out over time. That's kind of the hard part of what you're looking at. There's a cost to saving money upfront because it's going to cost more money down the road. This is, you know, I've listened to the comments. I listen, you know, I was here for the, the listening session. This is not an easy pill to swallow. But you've got some big components that you've got to do for this water treatment plant to basically build a new one and replace what you've got existing. Because 10 years ago, 12 years ago, the can got kicked down the road. And now you're in the situation where you've got to pay, you've got to write the check. And I think, you know, from a financial perspective, it's a tough pill to swallow. I, there's, there's, there's no way to sugarcoat it. But from a, from a dispassionate perspective, and I'm not the one here, I'm not the one paying the, the water rates, but it's a better financial decision to do the full project versus splitting the project into two. You mitigate all sorts of risks and in the long run, it's less costly to the community. And with that, I'll be quiet. I don't know if there's any questions that you have of me at this point or whether engineers want to chime in and correct anything I may have screwed up in my lack of engineer knowledge.
I have one quick question. So note three, assume 60 taps added per year. So what happens if we get 20 taps in one year?
Well, the, if you look at the details, about halfway down the, the page, you'll see tap fees. You have been budgeting $300,000 a year. At 60 taps, if you increase that tap charge to the 13,000 roughly $700, you'll be generating, you know, around $821,000. If you look at the gap down at the bottom or the, the line that says gap, and I had gap because the test year was in the negative, you're generating about $435,000 a year. So you could do 30 houses and still be okay. The reality is if you hit a, a really tough road where there isn't a lot of development happening for a number of years, the rates are going to have to be adjusted so that you make sure you've got enough dollars coming in. There is some additional cushion because if you recall, we've built in $300,000 a year for main replacement. If you know you're not having growth in a year or a two-year period, maybe that's not the time to be doing water main replaces and you tighten your belt and then you build back into it so that you can mitigate any further increases. This is, you know, this is where, you know, you know, when you start looking at water rates, you really need to evaluate on, at a minimum annual basis of what you're going to need to be at in, in terms of where the rates are going to be. You've got to know what the development's got to be. You've got to know what your costs have been. You've got to know historically how you've performed and you may end up with some, some adjustments along the way.
All right, thank you. And I had another question for Administrator Lehman. Not counting obviously the plant operators, but are there a lot of portions of people's wages or salaries that come out of the, out of this fund?
I don't know about a lot, but certainly there are some in, in public works that, you know, when they do work for the waterworks projects. And we could probably nail that down to give you an idea what that is, but certainly.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I guess if they're working on a water main break, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to go back to what you had mentioned about the, the additional taps per year and the growth of the town. As it relates to our ability to pay back the loan if we go with that full project. So, you know, right now we have some pretty decent discussions as it is about the direction of silt and the growth of silt. We have some trustees that don't want to see really much more development than what's here. We have some that do. So maybe we can get into it a little bit here about, let's say we approve the project and we have the rate structure and the payback and we, and we follow those guidelines. And then let's say it takes two and a half years for that thing to get built. So by the third year it's built, everybody's paying this money. And let's just say we're all gone. New board. Maybe they didn't pay attention to what we're talking about now and they get the direction that we're not really going to develop anymore. Like we don't want the traffic, we don't want the growth, like we're good. Well, all of a sudden, I think at that point, you said that those rates are then going to have to be adjusted upward if we don't grow to pay that back. So we need to take that into consideration. So I mean, if there's any trustees here that really feel like the direction of silt is not to grow, this is going to be a pretty major problem because then all of a sudden the people that have been here a long time, that plan of being here a long time, they're going to be paying even more in five or eight years or 10 years for this plant if there's a board that decides that no more growth, right?
And at that point, it's going to be what, another between four and 800,000? That's going to have to get distributed between the citizens that are already paying for it.
It, it, it very well could. And then it goes back to a decision of if that's ultimately what you as a board or a future board were to decide, then you should have built a smaller plant. You wouldn't have needed to build a plant to accept all that growth.
So we've been asking about that. Why do we need a plant that's capable of producing this much water when in 20 years we're still going to have less than 10,000 people in the town? You know, like I've asked that question a lot. Why do we need such a capable plant for that capacity?
How many people does a one MGD plant cover?
That's not, that's not in the financial guy's bail.
That's right.
Pat's on the line and Tony's in the room. So.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Pat.
So right now, your peak summer day is about .6 MGD. And in the future, it's likely to double to about 1.3 MGD. And your average day demand is going to grow from .3 to .6. Now, let's say, what if you didn't grow? Well, if you didn't grow, you could do a .75 MGD plant and that might drop the cost a smidge. I was just doing those plumeri numbers and it, most of the cost is in the ancillary work. So it drops it from maybe 25-ish million down to like 22, maybe.
About 6,400 people. Can we accommodate with the one MGD? Is that right, Pat?
I think it should be.
That sounds right from what I remember. I should pull it up here, but I can't, I'm on my computer screen, so I'd have to get into a different file, but I, that sounds right.
What was the question, Sam?
How many people does a one MGD plant accommodate?
Pretty close.
Yeah, we've talked about this before, that it's not the, the cost of going from a treatment plant that'll do one MGD down to 75 doesn't physically change the size of the building.
Yeah, right, right.
So the, the cost savings is not there.
I think it was more concerning about the growth and if we don't grow, that price goes up.
Right.
And if we don't grow, then yeah, with the, I mean, I don't know what another 800,000 is divided by the citizens we have now in their monthly bill.
Not quite significantly.
You know, I see silt growing, but all the years I've been here, we're kind of, I'm just going to throw this out there, we're kind of limited to where we're going to grow. We're not going to go past Davis Point. That's a swamp. To the west, we've got that one chunk of land out by the storage units and from that way it's already grown up. I don't see us ever going south of the river. So really the only place we're going to be able to go is.
North.
North a little bit. And some of them ranchers aren't going to sell for years and years and years. But I mean, we do have some subdivisions pre-approved all on the 16th out in that corner. I just don't see silt doubling. I could say we're, there's only so much we can go. I mean, I don't ever see us going, like I say, west and south, a little bit east, but once Davis Point, we're never going to go past that. I just don't see that swamp and it's, it's just not going to happen. So can we double our size of tone with what we have? I mean, I'm just.
There's a lot, there's a lot of development that's been plotted.
Right, but, but that is still going to double the size of what we've got now.
We also have some developments that have approached us about joining the water plant or joining our water system that currently are on their own that needed water that we had right now weren't able to do it for.
Are you talking about Heron's Nest?
No, I'm talking, I'm not even talking about Heron's Nest.
Oh, you're talking about up north.
Panoramic.
Oh.
Well, we've had more than panoramic. There's a couple other subdivisions in the area that are under state orders as well that was questioning whether they could connect to town or not.
I mean, we got a lot of commercial, but residential, yeah, I don't know. I'm just.
Well, and Heron's Nest is a good example. I mean, that's what, 75 units or more?
100.
100.
178, but they're talking about an additional 100 cluster minus.
And then.
Getting rid of the, getting rid of the existing long-term REs.
Oh, good, good.
And you guys may know more about it than I do, but Jerry, you talked about Davis Point. I think Israeli Ranch owns significant acreage on the other side there.
Davis Point and they talked about.
They've talked about.
I've been here, I had a little, I've been talking about that for 30 years since I'd been here. That swamp will never touch that swamp, so you're going to go, have to go way past that. That's just going to be out of town. I just don't see it happening. But I could be wrong, I'm just.
We already got a water line out there to Coal Ridge.
I know, but it, I.
So they could come back this way if they wanted to from that Coal Ridge line.
Coal Ridge on, back. I just think that the, if you build a plant that's one MGD and those, those people want to join, it's a huge opportunity to pay to play. I mean.
Yep. They pay the tap fees and they do the stuff and then they.
I mean, they pay more than the tap fees.
Yeah. Well, they'd be paying double the tap fees.
And higher rates and.
Yep.
That's how you're going to.
Unless they want to be annexing the town and whatnot and then it's, that's a whole different conversation. But then we get the property taxes and other things benefits, so.
Well, there's no, there's no doubt about it. We can't stop right now it's cold because then it's all going to rely on the people that we have here to try and pay for that plant. Not just, you're going to be looking at $300 a month because we're going to need a plant either way. See, but existing people are here, we're going to still have to come up with X amount of money. So we're going to have to, but, you know, we can't stop cold turkey. I'm not saying, I knew that, that just can't happen.
I think our biggest thing is figuring out more programs to get more money than $5 million in loan forgiveness.
Yes, I, I agree.
There has to be something out there to help pay for this project beyond one loan forgiveness program.
Did you ever hear back from that other $2 million? That could be.
Disadvantaged community.
There we go, this, I always forget that. Disadvantaged community.
I don't, is that another decision that'll be made at time of application? So we don't know that.
Oh, okay.
Until. And we are, we're looking at everything we can find to get more money. We got a couple more options that Jeff and I is working on to try to get out there to see if we can pull some more money in for this as well.
And I agree, you know, as a builder, I tell you right now, a minimum that it's not, is going to go up a minimum at least 5, 6%. You know that.
Yeah.
I, I bet you're going to still get me looking at 8% every year. So you wait five more years, you've went up another 15, $10 million.
Oh, oh, if you delay the.
I think this plant needs to be built for the community regardless, like the full, full plant, not the half plant or the, but to pay for it. You know, I've been dragging my feet on development because our water plant's on his last leg. And I'm like, we're, we're handing out all these, this development that we don't have and I, we didn't have any course of action for our water plant, you know? Once we have a water plant, then you can actually develop smartly. But until then, I mean, literally like I, I know a little bit about water waste, water plant. That plant's on his last leg, like literally catastrophic. Like Derek said one time, we're not going to just turn off the water and say they can't have water. That's exactly what happened.
That's going to happen, yeah.
That's exactly what happens. The pump breaks, you don't have water down the hill. That's like, it's just in 10 seconds, one second. I mean, that's how it is. So I mean, you've got to pay for this plant.
No doubt about it. We've got to build and I, I myself think somehow we've got to somehow try and do the whole thing, but I don't know whether to re, try and get more money out of tap fees, out of impact fee. I don't know. I'm just throwing, come up with some idea, I don't know.
So 100% of the tack or, uh, tap fee goes into this, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It, it, the difficulty with tap fees is it's hard to build your rate structure around the tap fees because you don't know if you're going to get those tap fees. And you still need to make, you still need to operate the utility and you still need to make your debt payment.
Right.
So it, you know, the one slide, we're about 50%. I would be more comfortable if you were throwing off so that you could have zero tap fees from a financial perspective. But I also recognize that that is probably not tenable from a financial standpoint at this point. This lift is difficult. This is not, I mean, this is a, this is going to be impactful to the community. There's no.
This lift is difficult. Um this is not, I mean, this is a this is gonna be impactful to the community. There's no there there's no getting around that. You know, I've mentioned this to my wife. If I told her that our water bill was going up a hundred dollars a month, she'd be screaming bloody murder. You know, we'd be plowing under our grass and wouldn't be watering any of it.
Yeah, yeah, and I just don't wanna repeat the mistakes of previous boards, you know, cuz twenty years ago, they bought a plant they shouldn't have bought. And then ten years ago, they decided not to do any improvements that were recommended to be done. And you know, the more we try to, you know, dissect this thing and do it in more and more sections, the the more we wind up doing the same thing the previous boards did, so.
But you know, you were here when they put that plant in and I was here. They were told then, you better start putting money away cuz it's only a twenty-year plant and nothing was done. And now we're the board stuck that's gotta do this nasty deed of raising the money. It should have been done fifteen years ago.
That's what I'm saying. I don't wanna repeat previous mistakes.
Cuz I mean, once we get this, okay, we're gonna build another twenty-year plant. Well, then we better start figuring besides not paying back. We better start figuring out how to put some money away for a sewer plant plus money for another water plant in twenty-five years. It's a never-ending cycle. And it was just the ball was dropped. Like I say, I was here, they were told and it just never happened, so we're stuck with it. And it's not gonna be popular, but I'm just we gotta come up with some solutions. Like you said, there's some more money someplace.
Yeah, there has to be more money someplace.
Or whether it's impact fees, whether I I don't.
I think getting the community on board is huge, which is a tough task. But then also there's this uh there's ideas of the community that the reason why we're building a new plant is just so we can blow develop the town out too. I mean, that's a tough task to overcome. That's actually part of who's gonna pay for it, you know, but.
But even if we don't have the growth, we're still gonna need a new plant eventually.
Exactly, regardless, the towns, the the citizens need new uh new water plant.
I don't know, but I don't know what the citizens rate rate increase or sale. I don't know. Sales something. We gotta come up with something, but. I think we do need to do the whole thing cuz like you say, it's gonna be eight, ten percent every year are gonna go up, so. Patching it together, I just don't think is the answer, but.
Yeah, and just the cost of demobilization.
When you see the model where if you do part of it now, part of it later, we end up by the time we end up doing the second part, we're paying more than we would be if we do the whole thing in the long run, so it doesn't make sense.
Exactly.
Like I say, I I you guarantee it's about ten percent.
More room for growth where we can have the higher tap fees so we can get the extra payments. I mean, in a crazy world where we add all these different divisions in that wanna come in once it's built, then if we get all those extra tap fees, then the rates won't have to be as high because we've got all extra money for the tap fees.
So when there's an annex in, there's no, we don't collect tap fees for them, do we? Cuz there's already a tap.
No, we still collect tap fees.
Well, still, if they're annexing in and hooking to our system, we'll collect the tap fee.
If it's but if it's somebody like say it's a subdivision that's currently on our water system and they annex in, then they wouldn't pay additional tap fees because they've already they're already hooked up.
They're already on our system, correct.
But it would be ones that aren't currently on, which if we say we've had several approach us.
Yeah, they would have to pay tap fees.
And if they wanna do it without being part of town, they paid twice to two and a half times what they would if they annexed.
Two times, two or three times the tap fee.
I know, at least two.
That's two, I believe.
And we have the opportunity to keep providing bulk water if we do this, whereas if we don't do this, we're not gonna be able to provide bulk water and that's gonna reduce. I mean, reduces the cost, but part of the problem with that is we it's a long stretch where we weren't charging what we should have been for bulk water.
That's right.
Yeah.
And we've corrected that and that's all we can do, just move from this point forward. We can't. It doesn't do us any good to look back and go, well, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, they didn't do this, they didn't do that. That doesn't fix today.
What, a hundred and five thousand dollars is what the town made in selling bulk water last year?
A hundred and forty-one thousand. I think you add those two together. I think those two definitely.
No, the grand total for twenty twenty-two was a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Oh, is that count does that for both?
Yeah, that's for both cuz it was thirty-six thousand on the commercial and sixty-eight thousand.
You did add them together, okay.
Yeah.
And that's. Not a huge amount.
No, it's not.
Well, and really a lot of that that hundred and five thousand just was covering the cost of producing that water. It wasn't like we were making money hand over fist on it.
Yeah.
At least we're covering the cost now, whereas in the past we weren't.
Well, and we're still not if we need to still increase water rates by thirty.
Well, if we increase water rates, then that number's gonna go up.
By thirty-five bucks a month per E Q R.
Yep.
Then we're still undercharging it the bulk.
We'll have to adjust the bulk rates, whatever the bulk rate is. It has to be at least what it would be town-wise, otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and yeah, just increase the bulk water. I don't wanna see bulk water go away because I don't like contractors using their hydrants.
Really kinda highlights, you know, in the past years, like just this chart, two thousand seventeen, almost sixteen percent of our total water was going out in the bulk water system. So you just imagine since that plant was built with no pretreatment, just how much that bulk water usage put on that plant over its life. It's a lot of water.
It's a lot of water, you're right.
Yeah.
Why would we not charge more for bulk water than residents?
Yeah, we should.
I agree. Why would we not do that?
Well, the one thing in this chart shows that, yes, the money's the same, but look at the gallons we put out.
Oh, yeah, it's down.
When we raise the rates, the gallons drop.
Yeah.
Use double them again or make them pay out-of-town rates and we're gonna get to a point where it's costing us more money just to have them things set in their idle. Not dispensing any water than it is dispensing water at the same rate that in-town rate users use.
And now we have Newcastle and Rifle both have. I mean, Rifle's had bulk water, but Newcastle now has it too.
Yeah, Newcastle started in late twenty twenty, which we didn't notice much, but in twenty twenty-one, when we raised the rates. You can see it if you go to the bulk, the coin station.
Yeah.
September was the first month we raised the rates and you can see the gallons went from five hundred thousand down to two hundred, down to one hundred.
Which I'm I'm actually fine with shutting down bulk water unless the county is gonna give us and if the county wants to throw us a couple million dollars.
Too, I mean, there's there's gotta be a magic number in the middle where it's paying for itself without the usage dropping too much, but if we can't find that number, then turn it off. And if we can't get county funding and there's there are resources in now Newcastle as well as Rifle. Why wouldn't we turn it off? I mean, the the plant should really be prioritized for the residents at the town itself.
Yeah, well, and you can see last year, we only put three and a half percent of our total production went out to bulk water.
Yeah, compared to almost sixteen percent five years ago. That's a huge decrease.
Well, there is some expense to maintaining and keeping those things running too, so you save that money too.
How did the tap fee increases compare to the rate increases in that as well? Are they the same or similar in terms of the percent increase?
No, the tap fee is based on a calculation of of capital and existing plant and replacement. Whereas the 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 user rates are based on what we need to operate the utility.
But at one point we had discussed like how how to allocate that percentage and has that been resolved in terms of?
No, I mean, that that is something that you as a board could consider, uh you know, adjusting the mix of what you're gonna try to get from the tap fees to offset the cost of the plant versus the the what it's set at right now. The difficulty again though is if you don't have the development and you're relying on those revenues, it's gotta still come from the same people.
Yeah, the development's gonna be slow and then we raise the tap fees even more, it's gonna slow even more.
It it may, yes.
So just like with the bulk water, it's finding that magic number. It it's yield management. It's all everything is.
Is there a way to limit the increase on current residents? But having a greater rate increase for new residents for these new developments?
They're gonna pay a higher rate simply because they're gonna have that higher tap fee that they're gonna pay. Um so they're gonna they're they're gonna pay more.
Developer is gonna pay that on a on a larger multi-unit type of development than.
You'll pass it along to the customer.
They're gonna pass it along to the customer. What I'm talking about every month after they buy it, can we, is there a math model where we can?
Typical.
Not not cripple our current residents to help offset the payments for the ones we hope to get in the next ten, fifteen or twenty years?
Typically, when you look at a a rate differential like that, it's because there needs to be additional infrastructure and or
Service.
Uh the cost to the service. Um you know, you've got a higher pressure zone or you have to put in a water tower and so now you're gonna have a zone that's gonna pay for that water tower. That's how you can adjust.
Isn't that a new thing?
But everyone's enjoying it.
Right, but the people who are here now are gonna pay for it.
Yes.
And the people who may or may not show up in three, five, eight, ten years, why would they not pay a premium? If if we're gonna pay eight percent more for construction in a couple of years than we would now, that's part of our risk analysis. Why why can't someone who may move here in five years pay eight percent more for their monthly water rate or some other number, I'm just using eight percent cuz it matches, than a current resident here does? Why can't we prorate the current residents at a certain amount of increase that makes it more manageable? And those who show up later have to pay a little bit more of a premium.
It does, but you don't wanna chase people away.
Well, same with that model then, so they know Derek under that model. Say somebody moves in across the street from town hall here in an old established part of town, are they paying the higher rate or the lower rate?
The higher rate if they're a new owner.
That would be a nightmare for the.
But that's why I'm throwing it up. There would be operational things, but I think we can manage it originally because the.
Otherwise, we're talking about tripling people's rates for the thirty-three thousand and X number of people who are here now and I'm I'm trying to protect them somewhat from that absolutely economically crippling increase for a lot of them and they were in here when we, you know, giving us in no uncertain terms their feelings on it. Now, those other people that may or may not show up in five to eight years, that's the cost of being here. And if you choose to move here willingly, then you choose to assume that increased rate. The people who are already here didn't make that choice. We're making it for them. And I'd like to see us insulate our current residents from some of that projected cost increase. That's sort of my thinking.
I could see that potentially working if it was a a new construction zone fee or something like that. But for Bob that sells and Bill that moves in to an existing house. I mean, if Bob stayed there for the next fifty years, why does Bill now have to pay more?
Cuz Bill just moved in. He chose to move here.
Yeah.
I mean, we all chose to move here.
I feel like that would be I feel like that would be tough to do in. I think you can only do it if you're adding on areas, like new areas that aren't built yet. Those would possibly pay a higher rate than the existing area, but doing that, it's.
But again, new residents know what the new rate is going to be. We're telling the existing residents who made a choice on a rate that existed some years ago, we're taking that choice from them. I think if I'm coming to town whether I'm building a new house or moving into an existing house, part of my analysis when I when I bought a house was what are my overall costs? What's electricity? What's water? And I knew what that was gonna be. As a new resident, that's part of the math. As someone who's already been here for twenty years, that shouldn't have to be part of the math.
Which is gonna be tough cuz you're buying a house, the current resident's gonna give you copies of their bills.
Yeah.
So you're never gonna know that there's this increase when you move in.
Well, you talk with the town officials hopefully.
Most people don't do that.
They'll be talking to the town before they move into a house.
Yeah, or or they start talking to their neighbors and discover that they're paying twice as much as their neighbor.
Welcome to the club, but um you that would create some significant problems. One, I've never seen it done before. But two, and that's I don't I I'm not sure that you can do it, but um there'd have to be some review of it. But you're already charging them a tap fee and they're the these new people or these new customers coming in, they're paying for their part of the plant through their tap fee. It's just that we can't count on that money in the rate structure because we can't count on that the growth is actually going to happen. So we have to we have to structure the rates so that in the test year, you've got enough money to operate the utility and make your debt payments.
So how many? So once once we do the full project and it's funded, wh- what did you what did you factor in for the amount of people that either don't or can't pay that bill? Like, how many people?
I did not.
So like, what do we do if twenty percent of the citizens either don't or can't pay their bill? Truly, like, what do we do?
I will say that there are programs that can help them. Beyond that, I don't have an answer to your question.
And I and I appreciate the fact that those programs are out there, but I still think that those programs are probably designed in some short-term way to help and not a long-term like ongoing assistance, right? So it's either these folks may have to sell their home and move, which is really hard anyway. People don't wanna do that, but we should probably. Well, I don't know. Do you ever factor that in? I mean, do we get like a real world? I I don't know what we would do as a town if that were to happen. I mean, I think that that's a real concern that we might have if we triple these water rates.
There's there's a there's a write-off process that occurs all the time for bills you can't collect on.
Right.
But typically, you're in a situation where you're eventually cutting the water off.
Right, I know I know that, but.
We we did discuss that some in some of the work sessions and uh there are some like through Catholic charities and stuff that are that the town are currently getting some people's water bills paid for.
Right.
And we worked with Amy on some of those because there are there are some significant numbers on those.
But those are stopgaps, right, to to your point.
Yeah.
They're not. I I need I need help paying my water bill for the next fifteen years. Is is they don't have a plan for that. It's I lost my job or some other economic reality has befallen me and it's gonna take me a year to get back on my feet. Catholic charities can help me for a year. They're not gonna help me for two decades.
Right.
Correct.
I really, I still think we just need to find more funding.
I agree.
If we say it's gonna be twenty-eight million bucks, five million in loan forgiveness, we need to find another five million in money somewhere. That gets us down to an eighteen million dollar loan, which then the water rates according to the the stat we looked at, which would be the small project at eighteen million is one twenty-two a month. That's way more palatable than one forty-seven a month, at least in my opinion.
Yes.
So it's gonna come down to finding more money to get the project cost down.
We're meeting with somebody next week. Who may have some answers. We talked to them before when we initially had the mudslide and we were trying to find emergency assistance and
Yeah.
Uh we weren't able to get it through them. It's R R C A C.
Yes, I believe that's correct. I can't remember.
And.
Too many acronyms.
They have the year of a lot of funders, so maybe there's something there. Uh the Congressional Directed Spending Program has just come out with our two senators, federal uh U S senators. Uh and we're preparing some documents and some letters of support for a couple people in the community to sign for us. Those are due on March tenth. You know, uh we'll we'll, as soon as we get those submitted, then we'll undergo a little lobbying camp. Well, maybe an intense lobbying campaign to try to make those things happen. And I I think for those of you who know uh any of our any of those folks or wanna write a letter on your own, I would encourage you to do it. And I can certainly give you the the information. Uh that would be our two senators. I haven't heard from our U S representative last time around. She didn't participate. Uh because it is, it's the old, uh what a lot of people used to call pork barrel pork barrel spending or earmarks. And those went away for about ten years or so, I think. And now they've come back under something called correct Congressional Directed Spending. Each elected official gets so much money and they can divvy it up. When I look at the list, and I'll send it to you, of things that were funded last year, I'm kinda blown away by some of the people, some of the organizations that got money. Seems like our project should get some this year, so we'll uh we'll.
And every year after.
Try again, and every year thereafter.
And we're still working on engineering to try to get construction costs down as well.
All right, that'd be even better. Get it down to twenty-five million. We find ten million, we're down to fifteen million in loan.
And and then it's very dual.
Then we're close to the, you know, probably the one ten a month, which is still double, but it's not tripled.
Exactly.
Our goal is like a hundred. I guess, actually, I think it was ninety-nine, but you know.
And if we're in, I know everyone's about conserving water, but if we're gonna build a new water plant that has more water than we need. There are people I'm sure that would be willing to pay more to. If we're gonna build a new water plant that has more water than we need, there are people I'm sure that would be willing to pay more to water. Grass in their yard.
Oh, you're saying to allow people to hook up to it for irrigation purposes?
Irrigation purposes?
Sure.
To be able to water more than five thousand square feet?
Thirty five hundred is all new construction.
Thirty five hundred square feet?
They wanna do more, they can, if we have the water plant that produce the water, then we just gotta pay for it.
Having people hook into our domestic to do irrigation when we already have a non-potable irrigation system. That could create some cross contamination issues. That's why they're not supposed to hook. Their domestic water to the irrigation now if they're on the town irrigation system. Cause you're putting that chance out there.
System, that would be just the potable water. They wouldn't be able to tie the two together.
If they do, they need a very good backflow device in between them.
Yeah.
And that will have to be certified, tested every year. And that's part of that backflow program that has to be turned into the town.
Yeah.
Well, we may not even have the water coming down the Colorado.
That is true.
Yeah.
There's a lot of snow this year.
It's always there for the taking. What havoc trouble we get in, it's there.
Is that the, it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission mindset?
We're pretty close to the start of that river.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're in a, I, I agree with you. I thought about that, like, yeah, we're pretty close to the origin of where that, that thing starts, so.
Yeah, there's, there's always some good reading on that if you ever wanna dive into it.
Yeah.
Those constant lawsuits, articles and numerous things on that Colorado River water rates.
I've heard it's the most litigated piece of water in this country.
Yes.
So.
Oh, I believe it.
Because when they allocated it back in nineteen twenty two at the compact. They allocated on paper more water than that river's ever produced on an annual basis.
Yeah. Yuck.
And those before the drugs.
Yes.
So I mentioned that, uh, we should maybe talk about bulk water station data.
Year average, yes.
Uh, in this meeting, so we didn't have to talk about it later.
Sure.
Are you, I mean, we can still talk about it later, but I, I wanted to make sure. I mean, since we've got a little bit of time, if you still wanna talk a little bit more about it.
I mean, we did discuss it some. Eric brought up the idea of raising the rates again on it, which I think would probably be an okay idea, but.
Or turning it off. I think, I think we have to raise the rates and if the county's not gonna help us with a new water plant, then I'm in favor of shutting it off.
I would not argue that at all.
Would there be a way to market it to bring in some revenue?
And so we could, we could do contractors only?
Let's say if you do that, like you shut the coin operated and just do the other.
They're both getting charged at the same rate.
That's what I'm saying, but just would shut down one, one or the other, because that way you don't have two you're maintaining and taking care of.
Well, would that, would that be worth it?
Right now?
I think to fu- to fund this, we're gonna have, have, have to have a balance to maintain growth and maintain selling water. We're, we're in the market of selling water. We gotta continue that. I mean, but it has to be profitable.
But I don't think at the point where we, even if we raise the rates to be. Where it's supporting itself, cause right now it's not supporting itself. If we raise it to where it is supporting itself. The price of that water for a, a person to get water for domestic use goes away. The only people at that point that are gonna use it are a, a contractor. Where they are passing the cost literally on to somebody else.
The individual people aren't gonna be coming in by.
Individuals, yeah. And then at that point, I'd be fine with setting up a, you know, a contractor. A system where it costs X amount, they, they still get to use it as is, so.
True.
Trey, when a contractor hooks up to like a hydrant when they're doing a subdivision, that's metered, they pay for that, don't they?
Yes.
Okay. So what rate do they pay? The same as city rate then, or?
I believe so.
Okay, I was just curious.
But lately we haven't been, nobody can hook up to our hydrants. Everybody's gotta go to the bulk water station. Um, the only ones we would, would be, like we did let Stony Ridge do it, brand new subdivision. They put in their own hydrant. The hydrant broke, they had to fix it before we accepted the hydrant.
Right.
And that's the reason we quit letting people hook to our hydrants. Even though we had a two thousand dollar deposit, we spending more time fixing hydrants than what it was worth. Because it's funny, they're not that complicated, but people don't know how to use fire hydrants. And the worst offenders are firemen.
Shut it, shut it as quick as you can, right?
I used to.
Occupied by a burning building.
I, I used to train firemen on how to use hydrants when I was on the. Department, because yes, we are the worst offenders on fire hydrants.
Interesting.
I mean, is that enough bulk water discussion?
I think so.
Or do you have any further? Direction?
Any other questions that we didn't cover?
So are we raising rates on the, right now for that?
Oh, oh, you mean for the bulk water?
Yeah. Was that, was that, was on the table, was that a question on the table or?
I would just ask Jeff if he can come back to us with what that rate should be with the, what the thirty five, thirty seven? Roughly, that it costs to actually break even? Cause is that per EQR? Is that per, that was per thirty five hundred gallons?
Thirty seven ninety five.
See where we should be at.
We can do that.
All right, good.
I look at Trey. We can do that.
Thanks, Trey.
Trey can do that.
Keeps rolling downhill.
That's right.
That's a different way.
Yeah, different plan. You're right, Keith.
Yeah, this one's actually going uphill most of the time. Okay.
All right, should we take a break?
We should.
Good, but thank you very much for that information. I think it.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't give you better news.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
One forty seven's better than one forty eight, so.
Yeah, that's true.